Good evening, everyone. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the May 27th meeting of the Chappaqua Board of Education. Can I have a motion to open the public meeting at 6:16 p.m.? Warren? Second, Hillary? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will move to go into executive session to discuss contracts, seek advice of legal counsel. I believe, do we have David on the line tonight?
Yeah.
Yes, and discuss possible litigation and matters of public health and safety. Can I have a second to go into exec at 6:17?
Second.
Ali, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll see you in executive session, everyone. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 27th meeting of the Board of Education. The Board has been in executive session since, I believe, 6:16, meeting with seeking advice of counsel, discussing potential litigation, talking about contracts, and talking about matters of health, public health and safety. Can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting at 7:04?
Can we reopen the public meeting?
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second then.
Ali, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. So can we please rise, or I know Holly has something for the pledge of allegiance for tonight?
Yes, I have a new friend from West Orchard to lead us in the pledge.
Okay, terrific.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Holly, for doing that. That's been a very nice addition to our Zoom public board meetings. We appreciate it. Okay, I will make this quick for the president's report this evening. I just want to thank everyone who's joining us tonight, and I hope everyone had a nice Memorial Day weekend. I know we had some nice weather, so I hope everyone was able to get out and enjoy it with your families and loved ones. Tonight is our budget hearing. I know we have talked a lot about our budget at Calwas meetings, and we did adopt our budget at the end of April, but New York State education law requires us to hold a public hearing to present our budget to the voters, and that hearing must be held no more than 14 days nor less than seven days before the date of our annual meeting and election, and that is why we are having our budget hearing tonight. We are within the required timeframe because our annual meeting and election, which is basically our budget and board vote, is on June 9th by absentee ballot this year. I know we have discussed this, but I just wanted to mention again that all registered voters should receive their ballots by the end of the week. They are being sent out tomorrow, and we urge all of you to exercise your right to vote, to fill in your ballots, and note that they have to be received no later than 5:00 p.m. on June 9th. We know that this means mailing your ballots earlier, but just to make sure if day of, you want to make sure that your ballot is received, we have installed a lockbox outside the education center. That's the building right at the entrance to Greeley, and you can drop your absentee ballot in there to make sure that it is received by 5:00 p.m. on June 9th. With respect to the Board of Education vote and the library vote, there will be an opportunity to vote for those seats as well as the budget on your absentee ballot. There are five candidates running for two seats. That's my seat and the seat held by Vicki, and there are three candidates running for the library board seat. The League of Women Voters of Newcastle has been kind enough to host their annual candidates night via Zoom this year. That is taking place tomorrow from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Information and links can be found on the League of Women Voters website, on Facebook, and we urge all of you to participate, but most importantly, we are urging all of you to please use your absentee ballot and vote. And that's the president's report for tonight.
Jane, can I add something to that?
Certainly.
We just received an email, I saw, from some community members asking when ballots were coming out, and they're being mailed tomorrow.
They are being mailed tomorrow, yes. Our district clerk, I do want to mention, and I think our district clerk, Lisa Elsner, deserves a huge shout-out. She has worked tirelessly to get these ballots out on a very short timeframe pursuant to government orders and with safe social distancing, and it's been somewhat of a miraculous effort. So many thanks to Lisa on that account. Thanks, Warren, also.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you, Jane. I'm going to open the public hearing now on the budget. So let me just share my screen, and Adam, Tony, and I will present, and John will present the budget, and then we will take comments from the community, and then I'll close the hearing to the public. So let me begin by just reminding the community that this is a long process for us that began early, and we've had to make adjustments along the way due to the pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's feedback as we prepared a budget that we felt would best support our students moving forward, that was economically responsible, given the hardships that the whole global community is facing due to the pandemic. So as always, our budget is guided by our two strategic questions. The first is about providing a robust academic and extracurricular program for our students that is progressive, that aligns with the profile of our graduates, and making sure we're doing so in a fiscally responsible way. And then we also take into consideration our strategic plan and our five target areas for instructional improvement as well as for instructional progress. And so these five areas are making sure that we have appropriate learning happening in our spaces and amplifying those spaces to support instruction, looking at our district-wide assessment practices, our K-12 social and martial learning program, and aligning that program throughout the district to support our students with the other side of the report card, aligning our K-12 academic program, and then leveraging instructional technology as a tool to personalize learning. And then we also have four other foundational elements that we think about when we're budgeting. The first is class size. The second is making sure that we're maintaining and expanding our academic and extracurricular program. The third is addressing our infrastructure and providing quality facilities for our community to use, and then our contractual obligations to all of our employees. So our budget that we are presenting to the community for their consideration through the absentee ballot process is a budget increase of 1.65% and a tax levy increase of 1.49%. And we will talk about that a little bit later in the presentation when we go over the financial aspects of this budget. But first, I'd like Adam to talk a little bit about our curriculum priorities. So Adam?
Yeah, so our curriculum priorities are designed around the district's strategic planning priorities that Dr. Ackerman mentioned a minute ago. We have a list here, a bulleted list. It's not exhaustive, but it's many of our priorities with regard to the curriculum alignment initiative that we've been moving forward. So in K and 1, you've heard about our phonics implementation. We had that presentation where the youngsters came and did a little phonics lesson with the Board of Education a few months back. We're also going to launch phonics first in second grade next year. So in the summer, we'll be doing professional development for a fall launch for second grade. We're also working on our fidelity to our workshop model and our TC units of study in our elementary schools, and we're also rolling up a workshop model into our middle schools. You see a K-8 review of Math &amp; Focus. Math &amp; Focus, the company that produces Math &amp; Focus, has a new platform with increased technology integration. So we're going to be purchasing that platform. It's the same program, but it's enhanced with some technology options that will be really helpful if we are back in a position next year where we're doing some distance learning. It'll even be helpful in our classrooms, to the extent that we're back in our classrooms. We continue to be focused on our health and PE curriculum, K-12 across the district, mapping our digital literacy skills, making sure that students have the technological skills that they need as they move through our K-12 system. You can see Next Generation Science Standards and Social Studies Framework, as well as, you know, about our RTI and Special Education Program Analysis. That one is linked to the RFP that I presented a couple of weeks ago. Professional learning, you can see that it maps very closely to our curricular initiatives. So there are many bullets that look like overlapping structures. These are professional learning structures that we use throughout the districts, using faculty meetings, superintendent conference days, in-service courses. Some of these things transferred over very well to a virtual environment, as we're in this iLearning system. Other ones are temporarily held, but I think the vast majority of these continue to be moving forward. The APPR process, which is our teacher evaluation system, was paused by the state, so that one's on hold, but the rest of them continue to move forward. So these professional, these are the professional learning initiatives that are mapped to many of those curriculum initiatives. You can see our MAPS assessment implementation, which we have tested all students twice this year in grades 3 through 8 in both ELA and math to give us some universal screener foundational scores. Again, the phonics kit in K and 1, we're going to roll that into second grade for next year. We made some revisions to our APPR process this year. You can see, again, the literacy work that we're doing. We continue to do work in our STEAM centers, you know, to the extent that we open in the fall. We're ready to jump back into those STEAM centers in the middle school that are open, and we hope to open the high school center next year. And then you can see 9 through 12, we have our L Building, which is that progressive instructional space up at Greeley, and again, Next Generation Science Standards, a Social Studies Framework, and then personalized learning through tech integration. And most parents know about, and the Board of Education knows about, our Ruler Program and our partnership with Yale and Mark Brackett to roll out with regard to social emotional learning. Do you want me to do the slide?
Yeah.
The important part with this slide, this is about our implementation, and kudos to Josh Colwell Block and his team. This is our one-to-one rollout, basically, and the important part of this that I want to emphasize is that next year, we are prepared to roll out iPads to our kindergarteners. That's the one grade that we are not one-to-one at this time, and we're ready to roll those out next year, so we are ready to purchase those for next year, and that way we'll have devices for all students K through 8. And then Greeley, we support a bring-your-own-device platform, so the kids have more choice to bring a device into Greeley. So this will complete our process of making sure that all kids have access to a device.
And I don't get, if you could just talk a little bit about how we're preparing for our new spaces.
Yeah, we have two new spaces coming online next year. One of them is Lower L at Greeley. It's going to be very similar to Upper L. We've shown you some pictures of that. It's a very progressive instructional space made up of some teaching and learning studios as well as a lot of breakout spaces and some larger group areas, small group areas, a lot of technology integration and flexible furniture. And that space is going to be very similar to the new space, which is going to open in Lower L next year. So we're doing some work around what technology equipment needs to be purchased for that space, the furniture and instructional supplies. And then we also have the Greeley STEAM building, which will complete that K-12 trajectory in our elementary schools. We have our GLCs, our Global Learning Centers, and then we have our STEAM labs in the middle schools, and we're going to have this STEAM building open up next year up at Greeley. So this is a shot from one of our middle schools, but we'll have a whole building devoted to STEAM and STEAM projects up at Greeley.
All right, and I wanted to talk a little bit about how we formulate our class sizes, and then we'll talk and share with you, again, some of our restructuring that we have added to this budget to support particularly Greeley and the PPS department. So first, I just want to remind the community that we have max class sizes, and these class sizes are negotiated through the administration and the teachers' union, and then approved by the Board of Education. So they are differentiated based on grade level, and they are, this is collaboratively decided with the faculty who are in these particular classrooms, and with their input, we come up with the parameters by which we feel we can support students within the framework of our program. So these are, this is a decision that we make collectively and we feel comfortable with. So when we're budgeting, we are cognizant of not exceeding our class sizes, and we also are prepared to make adjustments during the summer, if necessary, based on new enrollment or on anticipated reductions in enrollment, and that occurs throughout the summer, and we continue to monitor that process. So I'd like Adam to talk a little bit about some of the advancements that we're suggesting at the secondary level to support our students instructionally and socially emotionally, and then Tony will talk about our PPS and athletic program restructuring.
Thanks. So the first position that we've included in the budget is that addition of a high school assistant principal, and we contemplated that position, or we thought about that position in the context of Greeley being, it's a very large, comprehensive high school. It's a high-performing high school where students are under a lot of academic pressure, and they hold themselves to very high standards, and the expectation, and I think our students deserve, to have a really personalized experience. And by adding an additional assistant principal to Greeley, we can ensure that our students and their families have that personalized experience, and we also have, it increases our capacity to provide the instructional leadership that we need, so we can make sure that our administrators are working closely with our teachers to provide the kind of professional development and support that our teachers need to continue to thrive. So we feel like that additional person at Greeley will continue to support that instructional program that we have and are running there. And then the second position is addition of a middle school STEAM and enrichment support person, and that's going to be focused mainly at, it'll be all the middle school level, and it will add capacity. Right now, we have one person in that position, and she's currently shared between both middle schools. So by adding that position, it's been very effective, but it hasn't been as effective as it could be because that person travels between the two buildings and splits that time. So the addition of another person will allow us to have one person stationed at each of our middle schools, and that person will provide support for the STEAM centers, will help the faculty run interdisciplinary STEAM projects, also provide math enrichment and math support through STEAM and computer science. So those are the two of the positions, and then Tony can pick up with the psychologist there.
Yeah, thank you, Adam. Thank you, Christine. So some of the work that we've done this year is evaluating our special education program and the structures that exist within our special education department to make sure that we're best meeting the needs of our students and our families. We've also explored what we know as best practice in this area specifically, and so what you see here is the organizational chart for special education that reflects all of the work that we've done this year in preparation for next year and added in pieces to make sure that we're best meeting the needs of our community. So you'll see that in a place of three CSC chair people that are school psychologists because we know that school psychologists are effective at that work as CSC chair because of their knowledge around testing and data and making informed decisions. And we included the position of assistant superintendent for PPS in the process as well because that leadership perspective is critical at the district level and to provide oversight, not only in special education, but also 504s in guidance and with our nurses. And so we are excited about the development of the structure in special education and how it will help us move forward as a community next year. Additionally, we did some work with our PE, health, and athletics department in partnership with Jason Simo, and they've been going through their own strategic planning process in the athletics aspect of the work. And one of the things that we identified that was that there was a need to better support the program so that we can best meet the needs of our student athletes and all of our students who engage in PE and health. So we added an assistant athletic director position, a .5 position, to best support that work. And that position has already been added. It's there in the budget this year.
And then Tony, can you talk a little bit about our additions and our reductions in staff?
Sure. Yeah, thanks. So as you see down at the bottom, District Y, just to work backwards, if you will, I just touched on the full-time school psychologist that we're adding as CSC chairs and our assistant superintendent for PPS. If you work our way up, Adam talked about the assistant principal that we are suggesting being added at the high school to help support the program there. The .5 PE teacher and .5 assistant AD, that was what was added, the .5 for assistant athletic director. That's already a position that's been filled and has been successful thus far, in addition to our SRO that was also added in already for this year. And in the middle school, we had the one STEAM AIS support teacher already currently in place, being split between the two buildings, but as Adam mentioned, we're adding that position to better support our middle school students and instructional programs, so there'll be two of those positions. As it relates to reductions, you'll see at the elementary and middle school levels, total of four, reduction of core teacher elementary, and that's just due to declining enrollment or projection of enrollment. You'll also see at the high school level, reduction in our Latin needs, and that's just because it's being met by the staff that we currently have. We don't need that .2. And the .5 speech teacher, that was a reduction that took place last year, and that was also based on student needs. That was not a cut in our program, and so that's been in place this year. And district-wide, we did reduce the CSC chair, the administrative positions. They will not be in place for next year, and we cut out a .5 504 chair, which will be actualized by the inclusion of the school psychologist positions for next year.
Thank you, Tony. So now John and I will talk about the financial component of the budget. So we felt it was important to share because of everything that's been happening in our community that we anticipate that we will have reductions in our revenue. And what I think is most important to mention here, and we'll talk about this a little bit more in detail, is that if you look at a breakdown of how we support our budget through our revenues, you'll see that about 8% is supported by the state. And because of everything that's been happening with the pandemic, unlike other years, the state may reduce our budget, their allocation to the district, at two points throughout the academic year next year. So that's what we are thinking about, and as more information is shared through the governor's office, we are anticipating having to navigate in the future. Other things that we know may impact us is the reduction in sales tax. We now know we aren't going to be able to support some of our academic programs in our buildings because of the governor's executive order that schools will remain closed over the summer, and we also anticipate that we won't generate as much revenue from renting our spaces because the buildings will need to remain closed. And we're still waiting for guidance on when. These are all things that we, of course, are thinking about as we plan ahead, and we do know that we have a stated allocation. It was about $170,000 less than we anticipated, but again, the unknown is whether or not the $9.6 million that has been approved for our district will be reduced at some point over the course of this year. And you'll see some language around the timeframes in which that can happen. So we've already passed one of them, but there are two more opportunities for the budget director to reduce our allocation. So we'll continue to update the community on how and if and when that any information is shared with us about our stated allocation. But we do have some savings this year. We, of course, didn't run in full operation because the buildings have been closed since March. So you can see on this slide all the areas that we were able to save some of our funding, and that enabled us to do some pre-purchasing of some items that were included, that were originally included in next year's budget, which I'll talk about in a second. So as I stated earlier, our tax levy increase is 1.49% going into next year, but that is not what we originally proposed to the board in March. We proposed an increase of 2.75%, but if you had been watching our presentations and our meetings, we had met numerous times since the pandemic hit our community to make adjustments. And what we did was we reduced about $1.4 million from our original proposal to reflect what was going on in our economy. So we had talked in detail about some of these areas that made sense for us to make reductions in moving forward, and there are other areas that we decided that with our savings this year, we would be able to support purchasing and moving forward with some of those anticipated expenditures right now. So for example, currently, we're in the process of installing all of our video cameras that we had anticipated putting in place over the summer. So these are just examples of how we reduced budgetary expenses going into next year, but used some of our savings from this year to move forward the work of the district. So John, do you want to talk now about the budget that we adopted?
Yes, and as Christine presented earlier, this proposed budget, there's actually a reduction of about $1.4 million from the original proposal. And so right now, our proposed budget increase is 1.65% increase, and then the tax levy increase is at 1.49%. And here also, you see the screen that will show you nine budgets up here, and then there are eight increases. Can we go to the next slide? Okay, and then here, it shows you the average increases during this time for the budget increase, tax levy increase, and the tax rates increases. And you see the difference between Newcastle and Mount Pleasant. I just want to make sure, we're all in the same district, but we have two taxing settings. So the assessments are very different, and then also the equalization rates are different, and therefore the tax rates are different. And here is our projected tax analysis. I just want to stress, this is projected, basically is the estimated number. Until the assessments are finalized, we really don't know the actual dollar amount, the tax rates. So here are the projected numbers.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about the contingency budget. So if the community doesn't pass our budget, our contingency budget would be a reduction of about $1.6 million. So if we had reduced $1.6 million, we would look at reducing our personnel and our programs, and then perhaps using a portion of our fund balance. I do want to share that in normal circumstances, you could have another vote if your budget fails and present a different budget to the community for their consideration. Since this is unprecedented, on that, we haven't had any guidance as to whether or not that would even be feasible under these conditions. So I think it's important that the community understand that if the budget fails, that we may have to move immediately into contingency without a revote unless there's further guidance provided to us from the governor's office regarding this particular issue, which to date, there hasn't been any guidance provided. So in terms of our budget highlights, we feel that we respond to our strategic plan. We're anchored in our board's strategic questions, in our operating standards. We're ensuring that our students are physically, socially, and emotionally safe. We're increasing our instructional emotional support in our 504 programs. We're increasing our administrative leadership oversight and support for Greeley. We're maintaining that support for the athletic department that's been so helpful. We're maintaining our SRO, which we added after the budget was adopted last year. We adjusted our personnel based on enrollment, and we're making sure that we're below our levy limit to make sure that our communities are the property tax rebate. So just, I know that Jane had talked about this in our opening. Just to reiterate, our ballots will be mailed tomorrow with our budget newsletter, and in order to receive a ballot, you have to be a registered voter. This is just some commentary about what includes a registered voter, and if you have any questions, you certainly can contact Lisa. We have a drop box at our, out front of the Ed Center, so you can certainly drop off your ballot anytime up until 5:00 p.m. on the 9th. We have sent you prepaid postage, so you can simply just slip it back in the mail to make it easier for our community, which was a requirement under the governor's executive orders. And so we hope that people exercise their right to vote. We've never had an election like this, so we hope that all of our community members take the time to really understand the budget moving forward into this year. Call us or ask us if you have any questions, and then engage in the absentee ballot process. So we have representative, good representation in this process since this is such an unknown for us, not only in our community, but throughout the state, given the parameters in which this election is occurring. And then here we are, we've gone through our whole process. It's been adjusted along the way here, but you know, we've been flexible, and we appreciate the board meeting with us much more than we normally would have had to over the course of this process due to the dynamic that we've been experiencing. So our budget vote will take place over the course of the next few days, and then on the 9th at 5:00 p.m., we'll be in Greeley Gym, and we will be in votes, and we will notify the community what the results of the budget vote and the election are as soon as they've been tabulated. So, thank you. So let me just stop sharing my screen, and at this time, if there's any, this will be the portion of the hearing, if there's anyone in the attendees that would like to make a comment on the budget, you can certainly raise your hand, and we'll move you into the panel, and you can make a comment on the budget based on the hearing.
I see Lori Townsend has her hand up, so maybe we can move Lori over.
I see Lori Townsend has her hand up, so maybe we can move Lori over.
All right, hi, everybody. I'm Lori Townsend. I'm speaking on behalf of the PTA. And we've been with you for months of this process, and we really appreciate the budget you've presented. We, as a group, think it's responsible and forward-thinking and presents many things that are in the best interest of our children. And we voted unanimously to endorse it, and I just wanted to say thank you. We appreciate the way you've analyzed and reexamined, especially in light of the times, chipping away wherever you could, but still delivering a budget that will take care of all our kids. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
Are there any other community members that would make, like to make a comment about the budget during the hearing process? If you could just put your hand up? Okay, I don't see the hand. So that will conclude our budget hearing. I want to thank John, Tony, and Adam for all of their hard work on the budget and for presenting with me this evening. So the budget hearing is done. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now, the next part of our meeting tonight is a presentation about a potential solar project for the board's consideration. So Warren, do you want to provide an introduction? And then if our guests from BUR could raise their hand, once Warren's done, I'll promote you to panelists, and then you'll be able to share your presentation that you'll be sharing with the community tonight. So Warren?
Just quickly here. In the fall, I guess, late summer, early fall, the facilities committee started taking a look at different options we could have to continue with our green initiatives with the district. You know, we have small solar panel, I guess, call them windmills, coming into the high school. And we're looking to try and help the environment as well as be socially conscious that way, but also to be fiscally conscious for our district. We met with a, we met with a solar provider, and we had some discussions on the feasibility of this and what it might look like in our district and our community. When we decided, we thought this made a little sense. We actually took, we took a look at a couple of solar providers to make sure we're really getting a good handle on what solar could provide and what we could use going forward. Out of that, we would like to, we came up with one company we think is responsible. We actually had done some other homework, trying to find out what a good solar company would be. And with that, I'd like to ask Rob Krugel, who's the president of Brightcore, to present to the board on behalf of, you know, on behalf of the facilities committee, but to present to the board what he sees and they see as sort of a solar vision or vision that we could use solar in our district. And there are multiple sites that we could use. We're not sold on any specific site or any specific thing at this point, but we believe that it's worthwhile investigating and moving forward, especially in times like this where we can, we can maybe offset costs or help with some revenues. And again, be environmentally conscious. So, Rob, let me turn it over to you.
To just welcome, Rob. I also want to thank the board. We actually went through an RFP process and interviewed different solar companies as a part of our due diligence. So through that process, Brightcore is in front of the community today, presenting their proposal, as they did to the Board of Education through that process. So, Rob, you're going to share your screen, right?
Yeah, I am going to try to do that.
Hi.
Okay, are you guys able to see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We're good.
Okay, thanks, Christine. Thanks, everyone on the board and everyone else dialed in. So as Warren mentioned, Brightcore is a, we call ourselves a clean energy as a service company. We work with a variety of large, commercial and institutional building owners and provide a variety of energy efficiency and renewable energy projects to our customers on a turnkey basis. So we handle everything from identifying the project opportunity to designing the project, implementing the project, paying for the project, maintaining the project. In this particular case, as Warren mentioned, in light of some very attractive policy that's in place in New York State and in particular, in ConEd service territory around solar, we brought to the board's attention an opportunity to put solar at various locations in the district to generate ultimately a significant amount of revenue for the district and obviously provide a significant benefit to the environment around sustainability. So with that, I will flip through the presentation here. So just a little bit of background on what's called Community Solar. So as people may be aware, New York State, among many states, but New York State in particular, has had a very supportive policy around clean energy and climate. And last year, in 2019, Cuomo signed into into law the New York State Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which mandates that 100% of the power generation from the utilities in the state come from renewable resources by 2040. ConEd being one of the utilities in New York State is is subject to this mandate. And as part of satisfying this or moving towards satisfying this, a program has been enacted called Community Solar in ConEd service territory. And what this essentially involves is project developers like ourselves investing capital to build and own projects. We are supplying power to ConEd. They're receiving the solar power and moving towards the 100% renewable goal over the next 20 years. As part of this, ConEd is paying a premium for every kilowatt hour generated by the project. So there's, there's an incentive to build these solar projects, which otherwise are a bit more expensive than producing natural gas, for example. Building and landowners can participate in these projects by hosting the projects on rooftops, above parking lots, on vacant land. And for doing so, they receive significant compensation in the form of rent. And what's really nice about this Community Solar program, as the name suggests, residents in the community can participate and get the benefit, even though, you know, they're not necessarily putting solar on their rooftops. The roofs may not, some homes can support solar, but other homes may have shading issues, or it may be a rental property. And so this is a way through these Community Solar projects for residents to participate. They can subscribe for the projects and receive a discount on their utility bills, as I'll go into in more detail. So with that as background, we approached the district last year, had our engineers involved over a series of a number of months and coming through the RFP process, and ultimately identify opportunities at each schools to host projects that total 14.7 megawatts, which is, you know, this is quite a significant opportunity. As you can see, and I'll go through each of the sites individually, but you can see the different schools, based on availability of rooftops, parking lots, and/or land, have, you know, varying degrees to which they're good site hosts. But ultimately, the project, if the district goes forward with all these sites, would produce, as you can see here, over 18 million kilowatt hours per annum. We've broken it down a little bit further here on the next page, showing each of the different types of projects. So Grafflin would be on the roof. Greeley, we've identified four opportunities. One would be to create covered parking at the senior lot. What's nice about the structures that we use, and we took the board to a representative project at Manhattanville College. The carports do not involve losing any parking spaces. I know that's, there's limited parking at the districts. So the way that they're installed, we lose no parking spaces. And there's significant clearance to get municipal vehicles and snowplows and whatnot underneath the canopies if needed. But the nice benefit of this, in addition to generating solar, is we would be creating covered parking with under canopy LED lighting for safety and whatnot. So we've identified two parking lots at Greeley, also some land behind Greeley that could host a ground mount, and so on and so forth. You can see a couple of the larger sites, given the significant land surrounding Roaring Brook, Seven Bridges, and West Orchard. And all of this, as you'll see, with the site layouts involve significant buffers and setbacks and whatnot. So it's really something that's not, you know, visible from the surrounding areas. On the next page, we lay out some indicative project economics. And this is based on the design work that we've done at this point, working with ConEd, the utility around the projects, and discussions with the board. In total, the invest, the overall investment is close to $36 million. Currently, NYSERDA is offering incentives. NYSERDA is the state-run energy agency. They are offering incentives for these types of projects, which at current levels are $7.75 million, resulting in a net investment for Brightcore of $28 million. The way the transaction is proposed, the district would have zero upfront investment. We would fund 100% of the cost of the project. What we would do is enter into a lease with the district for each of the sites where we would be citing our solar assets. And we would be paying roughly close to $1 million a year, $900,000 a year in rent in the first year, escalating at 3% per annum. So over a 25-year term, given the long useful life of solar, solar assets actually have a longer life than 25 years, but many of these transactions are done to that term. Over the, over the life of the contract, the district would receive over $32 million of revenue, again, with zero investment, zero maintenance responsibilities. It's really, it's really a gift from the state, given the significant incentives that are provided. In terms of environmental benefits, which is obviously a key, a key reason to pursue projects like this, we've shown here a number of different metrics, what those 18 million kilowatt hours of avoided carbon dioxide emissions would represent across a number of different metrics. It's equivalent to removing 2,800 passenger vehicles for one year or avoiding close to 1.5 million gallons of gasoline, and so on and so forth. So obviously, a project like this would, in addition to generating significant revenue for the district, would provide, the district would really be doing its part, and the community for that matter, in significant, driving significant carbon reductions in this move towards 100% renewable energy in the state. One of the topics that we've spent a fair amount of time discussing with the district is as it relates to the ground mount projects, the sites that I mentioned behind Greeley, behind Roaring Brook, West Orchard, and Seven Bridges, obviously are wooded areas. So it would involve, you know, removing trees to accommodate the solar projects. So one of the analyses that the board asked us to do, which we did using data and calculators from the EPA, was to show the impact, both positive and negative, of removing trees. But the reason we're removing trees is to create room for solar power generation, which in turn is avoiding carbon emitting generation that the utilities, that ConEd would otherwise be procuring. And the net of it, in a very compelling way, is there's a net benefit of 23 to 1, 23 metric tons of carbon dioxide avoided for every one metric ton that is, that is lost due to removing the trees. So it may seem somewhat counterintuitive. Why are we taking down all these trees potentially and losing the benefit of that carbon sink? But the benefit in terms of carbon reduction from the added solar power on the grid more than offsets that lost carbon sink by a factor of 23 times. So it's obviously quite beneficial. Another piece of just our sort of commitment to sustainability is when we install and design and install ground mount solar projects, we seed the area with an area-specific pollinator-friendly seed, which obviously has, you know, produces incremental environmental benefits. Just summarizing here, the roles and responsibilities of the various parties. So as I mentioned, Brightcore and our team would be developing, building, and owning the project. We'd be providing 100% of the capital, covering all of the maintenance and paying rent to the district. The district would host the project, would receive rent, and would enjoy additional benefits, which I've summarized on a subsequent page. Residents, as I said, this is these Community Solar programs, which existing in a handful of states in the country really are fantastic vehicles for residents to participate in solar without having to necessarily put it on their roof and receive financial benefits as well. ConEd receives the power, and New York State takes a step towards achieving the renewable energy goals. So when we look at benefits to the district, we've talked about rent. One of the things we've also spent a fair bit of time talking about with the facilities committee and the board, and Joe and John, is the fact that some of the rooftops, the roofs need to be replaced or significantly repaired, just in the normal course today. So one of the nice benefits of our structure is we will be paying for, we will be replacing and paying for that replacement of rooftops for any of the roofs that need that work before we put the system down. And that'll essentially come out of the future rent. So rather than the district having to spend $1 million to replace roofs, Brightcore will pay for that out of, out of the future rent. I mentioned the covered parking that comes with the solar canopies. We can also install electric vehicle charging stations to provide that as the world is transitioning towards electrification of transportation. The solar on the roof also just kind of definitionally reduces wear and tear on the roof as it's covering the rooftops. These systems would not be penetrating, so we don't have to have to break the roof membrane or the barrier. This is all using ballast blocks, weights, and we work with structural engineers to confirm that this structure can handle the added load. One of the kind of nice ancillary benefits with the ground mount projects is they would all be fully enclosed with fencing. So it does provide some security buffer, makes it more difficult for, you know, people that otherwise might, you know, be able to walk through the woods and have sort of a straight walk up to the school. Here, we would have a fenced-in sort of barrier. There's an educational component. We would be monitoring the performance of these projects on a real-time basis. And we can install screens in the schools, and, you know, science teachers and faculty can sort of use this as a learning experience for kids to see the real-time energy generation from these projects and sort of what that means around, you know, different environmental benefits. And then obviously promoting environmental stewardship. Again, all with zero investment or maintenance responsibilities from the district. From a community perspective, as I mentioned, with the Community Solar program, the way this would work is anyone who is a ConEd customer can subscribe to the project. It's completely voluntary. And the upshot of subscribing to the project is you would be receiving a 10% discount on your monthly ConEd bill. So you can subscribe for an amount up to the total amount of energy that you consume. And if you're paying $300 a month now for, on your ConEd bill, you would be saving $30 a month. It's really that, that simple and that straightforward. Based on the size of this project, it's projected to generate approximately $3 million in residential bill credits. And with a 10% reduction savings, that's $300,000 in annual savings. So for illustrative purposes, if we assume the average... So for illustrative purposes, if we assume the average home in Chappaqua spends $3,000 a year on ConEd bills, that would mean that 1,000 homes could subscribe to this project, saving $300 per year per home. And now to the site layouts. These are the sort of various aerial representations of where the projects potentially could be sighted. We've spent some time with the board, and I don't think any final decisions have been made. We've shown the board examples of ground mount projects over at Swiss Re on 120, a carport project at Manhattanville College, and we went down to Fordham University to look at a rooftop project. So I think everyone on the board has at least a visual of what they look like. And now, over the next several weeks, months, you know, we'll be kind of honing in on the specifics of the sites. But this would be the Greeley ground mount site. You can see the different rooftops that are covered here in blue at Greeley. This would be the main lot at Greeley with covered parking. Senior lot, ground mount at Seven Bridges. These are rooftops and covered parking at Seven Bridges. Potential ground mount at Roaringbrook. And again, these designs are not set in stone. I mean, we've, you know, worked with our engineers and have them, ConEd has been evaluating them for the technical feasibility, but we're able to, you know, work with the board and hone in on the final sites. Rooftop at Roaringbrook, ground at West Orchard, rooftop at West Orchard, Grafflin, Bell, and then the library rooftop and covered parking. So that concludes the presentation. I guess we can open it up for questions.
Yeah, I think there's something important. So thank you, Rob, for sharing that. I think for our community members that are watching, this is almost like a two-pronged process. So on the agenda tonight, there's two resolutions. One is for a commitment to Brightquarter to move forward with projects in some form after a SECRE process is done on behalf of the district to study the environmental impact of each proposed site. So what would happen is that the board would have an independent evaluator review the plans and present to them an environmental impacts study on every portion of this project. And then the board would have the opportunity to make a decision on which parts of the project they would like to move forward with. So I think that's an important distinction that I'd like to share right now with everyone that's watching who hasn't been involved in this process, so they understand how we see this moving forward collectively. Rob, can you stop sharing your screen? Or can we, there we go. Okay.
Perfect.
So.
Sorry Christine, I think you said, the district is under no real commitment right here. We're committing to work with Brightcore to move forward. Where Rob said there's no investment on the district, there's no investment by the district in the actual solar portion, but we do have an investment for the, we're paying for the SECRE analysis, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. We want the process to be independent of Brightcore.
Correct.
With the board's consideration, so then they can decide how they want to move forward with Brightcore. But what we're doing is we're committing to moving forward with Brightcore if we're going to move forward with a solar project on any of those sites.
Correct. And then we decide what projects, if we decide we like the ground mount at Greeley, but we don't like it at Seven Bridges, then we make some adjustments along the way there. But this allows us to continue moving forward, which is something I think we really want to do. After, and like you said, we put on RFP, we interviewed a number of different, so would you call yourself a solar provider, Rob? Or what would you?
That name works, yes.
Yeah, okay. Different solar providers, solar companies that will help us. And we felt that this was really, these guys have done the work and want to work in the best interests of our district. And that's why we think it's a good idea. But again, we're not signing something that's going to hold our feet to the fire right now. We're signing something that says, we're moving forward, we think this is an important project, and we want to understand what the impact is going to be. And then we can make, this board or a future board will make decisions going forward.
Warren, I just wanted to add something to your comment about, we talked to other firms, but the other thing we like with Brightcore is the model that they're using, where we are pretty hands-off and there's a direct benefit to us in terms of these payments if we go with this, versus the model of an energy performance contract or something like that.
Yeah, and I just want to add, you know, this has come up a few times in board meetings in sort of minor ways, but this is the first time, obviously the community is privy to this full conversation. But as Warren mentioned in the introduction, this goes back a long way. First, the Facilities Committee looking at it before bringing it to the full board, and then the full board has been looking at it for a long time. And obviously, it would be, assuming we go forward, a mutually beneficial agreement. But I just want to also say, we've thrown a lot of questions at Brightcore, and they've gone back and forth with us many times, which we appreciate, but this is not something that, you know, is being presented for the first time in any recent way. We've gone back and forth. We were all in snow boots when we went to visit sites. So this has been going on back and forth for some time.
I agree, and I want to thank everyone at Brightcore because, you know, we have an obligation to look into this as a really potential revenue source and a model of sustainability for our district. So there are a lot of positives, but we also had to make sure financially that we were being responsible in terms of any outlays to us, any risk for us involved in this project. And so we did throw a lot of questions at Rob and everyone, and they came back and answered them. And we have worked through all of our questions and feel that at this time, we can now move forward with the SECRE and seeing if this really is viable, and because there are a lot of positives. And so that's why we are taking this next step. But yes, there's been a lot of work in the background that the community's not aware of, but the work has been being done. So I agree. Thank you for saying that, Hillary.
Vicki, you're muted.
Oh, Vicki, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I would also like to thank Rob and your team very much for being very patient with us, but we had a responsibility to fully vet the proposal. And I just want to say that we are looking into this seriously because, first of all, it's important for us to explore the sustainable use of energy that benefits everyone, and it can benefit our residents with energy savings as well. And with the point about the revenue that we would be getting, as everyone knows by now, we are really constrained with our revenue, even in the best of times. We have a tax cap and we want to be responsible to our taxpayers. And now with the advent of the pandemic, as you can see with the threat of state cuts, revenue is a big challenge. And so this is another way to help our school district get revenue. I think school districts will have to explore options that they've not been used to exploring in the past. Other school districts have done this, so there is nothing unusual in that. But we've been very responsible in taking the time to ask a lot of questions and fully vet the proposal. So thanks again, Rob, and we will continue.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Rob? All right, Rob, thank you. We're going to remove you from the Zoom.
Do you still need me to stay on the call, or should I?
That's okay. No, we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob, very much. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. I think it was really very beneficial for the community to hear that at this point. And I know there'll be more information down the line, but I think that was a very thorough explanation of why we're exploring this. So thank you. Next up are committee reports. Obviously, that was related to facilities. Is there anything else that anyone needs to report at this time?
We're having a policy committee meeting on Friday.
Okay. Great.
And that will be on the website.
Okay.
And we had an audit committee meeting this week.
Right, we had an audit committee meeting the other day. Thank you, Christine.
Okay. All right. Next is public comment. For those of you familiar and who are here, Adam moved someone over. Once they raise their hand, if they're listed as an attendee, they can come over and make a comment, a public comment. We are still doing our usual procedure where we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. We need to have audio and video on you to promote you over to a panelist. So I'm just going to check over and see if there's anyone under our attendees with their hand up that would like to make a comment during our public comment period. I do not see anyone right now, so I think we can move on to approvals and ratifications. Thank you. And we don't have anything under approvals and ratifications tonight, so we can move on to item number four. Oh, Christine, you're muted.
Gosh, okay. I've done 4.1 instructional for your consideration.
I recommend that we accept the superintendent's, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 4.1.
Can we have a second? Nope. Hillary, great. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Wait, oh, Jane. I'm sorry, before you vote, I just want to share with you, I notified the Roaringbrook community of Doreen's resignation. And Tony will be updating the community next week at our board meeting regarding the search process, because this is not a regularly scheduled board meeting, so it would be appropriate for him to do that on June 3rd. Okay?
Okay, great. Thank you. So all in favor of 4.1?
Aye.
Aye. There's nothing under 4.2 non-instructional. So we do adjourn five, which is our, three items are there, 5.1, 4.2, and 5.3. We take them together in a single motion for purposes of efficiency, since these are relatively routine matters. But any board member is free to pull out an item or ask for a discussion on that. So can I have a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.3 as our consent agenda?
I move.
Can I have a second? Holly, thank you. Any questions or discussions about any of the items on here? Okay, all in favor of items 5.1 through 5.3?
Aye.
Aye. We don't have anything under facilities or financials tonight, so we move on to notice of future meetings. Our next meeting is Wednesday, June 3rd at 7:30 PM. That is when we will be honoring our retirees. That's always a really special time for them. And our meeting after that is Tuesday, June 9th, which is the annual budget vote and election. Again, all ballots are due to be received by 5:00 PM. That concludes our meeting for tonight. Can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting at 8:08 PM?
I'll move.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thanks Vicki. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a lovely evening.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.